Good morning. The legislature is called to order. First bill on the agenda this morning is Bill 507. Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move that Bill 507-31 LS, as amended by the committee, be placed in the third reading file and I'd ask for an opportunity to speak.
Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, though I have designated it as Bill 507-31, as amended by the committee, I want it very clear to all the members of the legislature and the listening audience that the "as amended by the committee," the only amendment that the committee made from the bill that was sent from the governor was that we deleted the section as it related to the firemen as per the pronouncement by the governor during that period. As you can recall, during the period that we were having the hearings during -- on 507, the governor went out to a, I guess it was a Toomey Fire Station with a couple of senators from the legislature and some candidates. He announced that he supported, I mean that he was going to retract his request to affect the hours of the firemen and was suggesting that it be removed. And so as per the governor's pronouncement and press releases that were made during the hearing when we were listening to the firemen and it was clear that the governor had wanted that removed, Senator Rispuchia made the motion that it be removed. And so that is the only amendment that has been made in the bill. And so that's why it's just amended by the committee. So that's the only thing that has been removed. All the rest of it is as was sent by the governor. All the underlines that you see in there, those are as the governor sent it to us in 507. Madam Speaker, I'm going to do something very unorthodox and I hope that you forgive me. When we had the hearings on this bill, or let me just talk about the bill in general. The bill in general has about 15 or 16 sections. The first 14 sections, really the savings that could be realized after the governor's suggestion that the firemen be taken out would amount to maybe a million and a half, two million at most. And so the biggest savings that he, at least in the press releases that we get from the front office, the biggest savings he anticipates is from the section on the early retirement plan and on the extension of amortization. When we had the hearing and invited the retirement fund to the public hearing, the retirement fund was adamantly opposed to both the amortization and the early retirement section. And so, and you can see the testimony and I think many of you heard the discussion on the radio when Speaker Joe T. called into the radio station and was wondering where this idea came up from and he was told that it was at a village meeting and that he probably should have attended a village meeting and it was awful. But the retirement fund is adamantly opposed to the early retirement provision as it currently stands in the bill. And especially, it was very evident that the executive, that Adaloupe, had not gone and done all of its homework as to how this section was going to be implemented. Because when we had the hearing, they were figuring that 500 people would be taking the early retirement and that the directors would make the decisions on how that's going to be done. But when we took a poll of the people that were in there, we all of a sudden discovered that there could be as many as 1,800 people that would be eligible for retirement. And could the government afford to pay its contribution of the early retirement if all 1,800 of those people decided that they were going to go into the early retirement? How those people were going to be selected, though the bill does provide for a one-year period where they were going to pass on their knowledge and prepare somebody before they exited, just the numbers and the effect that it would have on the retirement fund, my first motion, Madam Speaker, would be to repeal Section 15, which is the early retirement provision, which starts on page 16. And the reason why I do this, Madam Chairman, is that I know that the governor has told us that if we don't, I mean whatever we do with the bill, that we have to find some other ways to find some money. So there will be other suggestions on how we find some money. But my concern is that it's been very clear and I can't underscore enough that the word quote from the retirement fund is adamantly opposed to it. For those of you that read the newspaper, you've seen the letters from Joe Guthrie, where he has written about the fact that the retirement fund has a fiduciary responsibility to the retirees and to the members to protect the fund and not have it go the way of the CNMI retirement fund. And it's not even a veiled threat. It's very clear that Mr. Guthrie and several other retirees will challenge this piece of legislation in the event that we pass it with the early retirement fund provision in there as it is. And so if we're going to have, if the governor is going to have any savings, even the 2 million that he has in the earlier sections during this first term or the rest of his term and not have the entire bill tied up in court, we have to remove this section. There has been a, there wasn't early retirement in 1999 and the experience of the retirement fund was so bad that there was a lawsuit taken and it became very clear in that lawsuit that in order for, that not only do the retirees have a fiduciary responsibility, but they are the only trustees or board members in government of Guam where their personal property is actually and can be held and a lien placed on it in the event of a lawsuit. And the reason why I know this is there was a woman who was on the retirement fund and when the earlier lawsuit, the Bautista case was undergoing, was going on, they had placed a lien on her property and the woman wanted to, this trustee, the board of retirement fund trustee, wanted to borrow some money on her house and discovered that there was a lien on her home. And so it's, when you guys in the early legislatures really made sure that the retirement fund is, that the fiduciary responsibility is fulfilled and that they don't mess with the retirees' money. And so anyway, it's very clear that unless, well, this and the amortization section are taken out, the retirement fund is going to either, is either going to bring a lawsuit on its own or it will join members who decide that they're going to sue the retirement fund. So anyway, Madam Chairman, I think it's imperative that we address this and address this because otherwise, if this section isn't taken out, I just don't see how I can vote for the bill in the end and all the other amendments would be, would not make any sense. And so I ask that the first consideration be that Section 15 on the early retirement fund be removed. I was thinking, Madam Chairman, of, and forgive me, I forgot to put my contact in this morning so I can't see you. I don't know how I drove here this morning, but I was so excited about coming in to deal with this bill. But anyway, I was thinking about having an amendment and I'm not submitting it yet because where I would have, notwithstanding any other provision of the law and within 60 days from the enactment of this act, the government of Guam Retirement Fund shall submit to Imega Lai Hing Guahan and the Speaker of Legislature a report analyzing the feasibility of the retirement fund reforms, which must include but shall not be limited to an actuarial analysis of a limited early retirement program admitting no more than 600 employees within three years of retirement and excluding those employees that Imega Lai Hing Guahan determined to be essential to the health and safety of the people of Guam; b) the issuance of pension bond to decrease the unfunded liability to the government of Guam Retirement Fund; and c) any other retirement fund reforms which the government of Guam Retirement Fund reasonably believes will decrease the cost of the retirement fund to the taxpayer and is in the best interest of the people, of its members. But I'm not sure if first I have to remove 15 or if I'm just going to have this copied and ask that this be the amendment that...
To replace it.
Replace 15 with this?
To replace it. Well, I thank you very much for indicating that at least because then it allows the members to formulate...
Yeah, just so you know that the reason why I'm asking for 15 to be removed is I want to put that in. And if you note from the language that I just gave to you, it's not saying that we're going to have one. It is instructing the retirement fund within 90 days of enactment of the bill to get back to the governor and to the legislature on some kind of way that we can reduce the unfunded liability of the retirement fund, but also provide some suggestions on how a smaller era might be feasible and might be palatable to the retirement fund. I don't know if they'll do it, but I'm just saying, I'm not just saying throw this whole thing out. I am trying to place something in, put something in its place to make sure that we try to address this. I know that the governor was well intentioned in trying to figure out some way of doing an early retirement. And let me tell you, I spent many days doing shuttle diplomacy between Adaloupe and Maiti, trying to figure out something, but not being able to do it, I decided I would just have a section where they have to get together and get back to us. But I just needed to at least know whether or not the early retirement provision was going to stay in here. Madam Chairman, Madam Speaker, I could have in committee removed this by myself or have the committee remove it. But I thought that since this was sent to us by the governor, that this really had to be something that was done by the members at large. And I hope that you don't think that I was shirking my responsibility. I was not. And I, please, I don't want you to think that I was shirking my responsibility by doing that. I thought that we should be open and this discussion was going to be out in public of my concerns about the lawsuits and the fact that it's real. I mean, it's not something that is, you know, imaginary. Joe Guthrie's letters to the Marianas Variety and to the PDN have been constant about the fact that this provision is sufficient to be challengeable and the concerns of the retirement fund over this are sufficient enough that I think it's imperative that we address this. And so just as a start, that would be my first motion is to remove, to delete Section 15. And after that, I will then have an amendment to, that I hope will be sufficient to replace it.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Vice Speaker, on the motion to delete Section 15, Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I guess I rise more in a point of inquiry of the author would yield. And that is to request that, because just in my opinion, in my analysis of all the hearings that I attended on this proposal, in listening to both sides and in recognizing the good work of the vice speaker, as he mentioned earlier, of shuttling the diplomacy between Maiti and Adaloupe and trying to work through this, I'm just wondering, Madam Speaker, because I think we should discuss this amendment, but I would also just start by saying as a point of inquiry, didn't we all basically see that if this particular section would be deleted from this bill, that in essence, there really is no meat left to it in terms of the proposal? So I guess maybe I'll do a point of inquiry to the, and see if the author would yield and then maybe we could go to a recess to discuss his proposal to see if that actually maintains some hope for the bill.
Mr. Speaker, do you yield?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Speaker, I do yield. Yes. The word from Adaloupe was that they would be able to realize, at least in the press releases, somewhere from 16 to 40 million dollars from this section. If this section is taken out, well, actually if this and the actuarial section are taken out, then the other 12 sections would only provide savings of about 2 million. And I know that other members and I have others, in compliance with what the governor's request was, have some suggestions on other things to put in for savings in the government. But the thing is, is that if we go through all that effort and we leave this early retirement section in, I really, and you were there at the hearing about how heated that was and how they would be forced to comply with their fiduciary duty. I mean, I can understand members bringing lawsuit against the, I mean, to the retirement fund to enjoin them or to do something against this law, but it would really be embarrassing to us as the government if the retirement fund trustees join them as party plaintiffs against us. And so that's the reason why I wanted to deal with this first, because if this doesn't go out, you know, we can pass the rest of the bill just the way that it is and let it go to court and figure out what's going to happen at that point. But I'm trying to, I'm trying to be as reasonable as possible and as responsible as possible by saying, I understand that this section is a big thorn. I mean, this and the amortization section is a big thorn in the side of the retirement fund and I just want to address that. And if it's not going to go out, then I can sit back quietly and, you know, the rest of the bill can go through, whatever happens. I will not be voting for the bill if these two sections survive. But I just need to know whether or not I need to pay attention after that.
In that case, Madam Speaker, may I request a recess just to discuss this?
Okay, we're going to take a brief recess.
So, you and me making the motion then at 2:00? You mean to go into the committee of the whole?
Pardon? Yes.
Okay. So, we're just going to set aside then until 2:00 this afternoon?
Correct, please.
So, on that motion, without any objections?
Okay.
Is Senator Guthridge here for 5:32? Mr. Vice Speaker?
Madam Speaker, you recognize on Bill 524?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to place Bill 524-31COR as substituted by the author on third reading, but I would like to have some discussion on it.
Hearing no objection.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Bill number 524 was introduced to fill in a financial gap that UOG will face without raising tuition for the next few years. So, for the past few years, UOG has taken steps to avoid tuition hike by becoming more efficient and deferring hiring. Special funding from Public Law 31-126 authored by the good gentleman, the Chairperson on the Committee for Appropriations, also prevented a tuition increase. During a time when public colleges throughout the United States increased their tuition and fees by an average of more than 10%, UOG held the line. This bill will supplement UOG's budget by providing an appropriation in fiscal year 2013 and 2014 totaling $2.8 million, giving the university time to plan for the future, balancing the cost of providing education and ensuring that higher education remains affordable for people in our community. I agree, Dr. Underwood, and I know all of you share the same opinions. We want UOG to remain an affordable and sustainable option for higher education. We need to maintain the quality of our educational programs. We want to increase the number of graduates from UOG if our economy and our society is to enjoy progress and prosperity. After careful consideration and with consultation with GIDEA and others, I substituted Bill number 524 by merging my bill and Senator Mabini's bill, number 526, to create an effective mechanism to provide the necessary funding to keep tuition rates at its current rate. The bill would allow for the refinancing and restructuring of the General Obligation Bond Series 1993A bond that is estimated to net us a savings of about $3 million. Just as this process have been demonstrated recently by GPA to save millions of dollars for that agency and its customers, this bill aims to do the same. Other information that I'd like to share with you is that the annual debt service payment on these bonds that if, when it's refinanced and restructured, is about for up to, through fiscal year 2019, would be about $4.8 million per year. And as of today, $24.66 million of the 1993A bonds are still outstanding with an average interest rate of 5.4%. Interest rates are now much lower than they were in 1993. The term of the remaining bonds is short compared to when the bonds were issued, six years versus 25 years, enabling a lower borrowing cost. GUWAM has created a business privilege tax credit that is higher rated than the GO credit, also enabling a lower borrowing cost. So, by issuing the Level Debt Service (BPT), secured refunding bonds, GUWAM can reduce its annual debt service payment by over $500,000 annually to $4.3 million per year and generate total present value savings of approximately $3.2 million. The outstanding principal is about $26,660,000. The maturity date is November 15, 2018. The average outstanding interest rate is about 5.4%. And by refunding, the true interest cost will be about 1.63%. So, therefore, by refinancing and refunding, of course, that's the reason why earlier I said that there potentially is savings then of $500,000 a year. The reason as well for the two years, 2013 and 2014, is to break that dollar amount up, is to be able to help the university stabilize itself and that thereafter, of course, and I know that they are actually working with, with their faculty and staff in putting in more measures to be able to reduce their spending and provide for more savings. The amendment that I'd like to provide at least this time, if I may, because like I said earlier in a meeting that we had with GIDEA, and the language, of course, that we've provided here also came from GIDEA, and those are the underscored areas. Now, I don't want to alarm anybody when you look at page three and four with those languages, because these are bonds, of course, and five, that has already been done. So, but in order for you to, to be able to follow the language and to see the amendments that are provided for here is that we needed to put the language as it is already by law just to show you where the amendments are being made. So, the amendments are on page six for a third series bond. So, if you remember, the first two were for income tax returns. This is for a third. And the, on page seven, it explains that as well for the first and second bond series. And then, of course, the renumbering, all the underscore areas. And then, the last on page eight is that it gives, it speaks about the fiscal year that the third series shall mature no later than December 31, 2018, and shall bear interest such rates and be sold for such price or prices as shall result in the present value of debt service on the third series of the bonds being at least 2% less than the present value of debt service of the bonds being refunded using the yield on the third series of the bond at, as the discounted rate. If, of course, the amount is definitely going to be higher than this, then we'll know, and that's the reason by law is stipulating exactly what, you know, how long we want it to be for, what interest rates are, and, and if, and you saw that in, in other cases where you don't want to, that if it was going to go up to a certain interest rate, we're going to say, no, you can't then come back again to the legislature for, for more approval.
Madam Speaker, do you have the, do you have the amendment?
Oh, no, there's no amendment yet. I mean, it's, and the bill. Do you have a copy of the itself? Because it's all written in, the underscore. If you go through the bill, you see the underscore sections. That's, that's the incorporation from the amendment that was provided by GIDEA and also with, working with Senator Mabini and Senator Yamashita.
That's the double underscore, right?
Yes.
We're talking, we are talking about the double underscore?
Yes.
So, that every, okay.
So, the, the first amendment, and to try to get this all out, because I don't want to, to forget, is that, and I know that we have spoken about this, but it, it just didn't show at the time, but for a second co-sponsor will be Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes. Third is Senator Sam Mabini. Fourth, Senator Yamashita.
On that motion, without any objections, motion carries.
Thank you very much. The, the other amendment, I think I'm going to need to make a copy. Oh, copy's being made. I'll just go ahead and, and read it because it's, it's supposed to be on page nine. So, if you look at nine in terms of how the monies then will be a partial out is that we would have for the first, 2013, 1.47 million for UOG, and then on the second year, the same dollar amount. Hence, I was saying earlier, is to allow the university to kind of stabilize, work through all of their, their cost-saving measures so that then they can really plan this in advance for their students, and it's not something that's going to happen immediately. The, the, what I'd like to do here in the amendment you will be getting is that for, rather than putting any specific dollar amount here, is to delete B and C, and the replacement will be, is that the remainder, B will be the, the new B, is that the remainder of the savings realized shall be equally distributed to the Mayor's Council of Guam to be utilized as matching funds for federal grants for capital improvement projects and to be deposited into the Tax Revenue Reserve. So, rather than say B, this dollar amount, then C, the remainder into, that it be replaced with this new language, that the, being very specific, at least for the mayor's, to make that distribution, that it be equally distributed. And, and this is a, a new language, of course, in which it would require that they really go out and find some matching funds for federal grants and understand that there are grants that are available that they could use, and, but at least it gives them this money then to try to double the amount that they can use for capital improvement projects. And then, after that dollar amount, because we don't know, and I don't want to be very specific in this case, other than for UOG, is that then the balance of it, again, also be deposited into the Tax Refund Reserve. So, that's my second amendment.
On the motion, on the Speaker amendment, anyone else wish, just speak on the motion? If not, no objections, motion carries. Speaker Wampat, you still have the floor?
Other than, than that, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues to seriously give this, you know, consideration for passes to assist our university and our students. And, and, and the way things are, of course, right now, I know these are hard times, and sometimes, and this is the only available way, because you know that we tried other ways, and we were unable to, to secure additional funding. Thank you, Madam, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker Wampat. Anyone wishing to speak on the main motion for Bill number 524 as amended, as substituted? Okay, we have Speaker, I mean, I'm sorry, Senator Guthridge and then Speaker Pangolinan.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm, I'm pleased to support the bill. This is a very critical bill for the university and for the stakeholders of the university. And I, I know that we're facing financial challenges seriously in this government. But I, I believe the university is a solution to some of our financial problems because of the students that study and graduate from there and contribute to our economy and to our, to our people in, in various professions and in various ways. And I think, Madam Speaker, that this legislature, through the sponsors of this bill, have found a way to help the university, and I strongly endorse this bill. Thank you very much.
Senator Guthridge. Speaker Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the bill, but I wanted to add one minor amendment, and that is on page six, line 22, Mr. Speaker. After the word "refunded," add the words "inclusive of all fees for bond counsel and bond underwriters and other costs of issuance," and then the comma. So that the, the present value of, of the debt service for refunding the bond shall be at least 2% less than the present value of the debt service of the bonds being funded. And in order to get the true, the true issuance cost of the bonds, you have to figure in the cost of issuance, bond counsel fees, bond underwriter fees, and that really gives you your real savings. And so, if we do want to achieve and refinance this when we get real savings so that we can have the cash freed up in order to give to the University of Guam from the, from the debt service, after figuring in and calculating for net present value, we have to include the cost of issuance. So, it would be, once again, to add after the word "refunded" on page 22, be inclusive of all fees for bond counsel and bond underwriters and other costs of issuance, comma, and, continue, then it continues. Line 22, page six.
Any objection to the amendment by Speaker Pangolinan? Hearing no objection. Senator Yamashita, did you wish to speak? You're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for allowing me the opportunity to stand in full support of Bill number 524.
words, "Inclusive of all fees for bond counsel and bond underwriters and other costs of issuance," and then the comma, "so that the present value of the debt service for refunding the bond shall be at least 2% less than the present value of the debt service of the bonds being funded." And in order to get the true, the true issuance cost of the bonds, you have to figure in the cost of issuance, bond counsel fees, bond underwriter fees, and that really gives you your real savings. And so, if we do want to achieve and refinance this, when we get real savings, so that we can have the cash freed up in order to give to the University of Guam from the debt service, after figuring in and calculating for net present value, we have to include the cost of issuance. So, it would be, once again, to add after the word refunded on page 22, "Be inclusive of all fees for bond counsel and bond underwriters and other costs of issuance," comma, and, continue, then it continues. Line 22, page six.
Any objection to the amendment by Speaker Pangolinan? Hearing no objection. Senator Yamashita, did you wish to speak? You're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for allowing me the opportunity to stand in full support of Bill Number 524-31. I truly appreciate the efforts, the leadership of Madam Speaker Wampat, Senator Tina Munia Barnes, who moved this measure, and then welcomed Senator Mabini and myself to the table to merge, to collaborate in resulting in this. I, I really do believe that one of the reasons why Guam is as good as she is, and that Guam is actually moving forward in many good ways, is because of the University of Guam and the opportunity it provides for our people to continue their schooling and to realize their potential, to move forward in economic development and quality of life issues. And so, I'm always concerned when I hear that we're over, over and over again, we're cutting corners, we're trying to figure out what we are not going to support or fund. And so, this measure will help. I certainly do know that the current leadership of UOG is looking at how to restructure the University of Guam, to bring it up to the 21st century, and dealing with issues like telecommunications, like distance learning, like global, the notion that our world is global and is getting smaller and smaller. So, if this provides, as this will provide, a continued opportunity for our students to proceed, a continued opportunity for those across our region, and a continued opportunity for those across the world who want to come learn on our island, to make the UOG a more vibrant and a stronger place to learn, I truly appreciate this step. Most certainly, in the future, and as the previous speaker said, this really is an answer to many of our challenges on our island, and that is education, that is research, and that is service. I do hope in the future that we can very seriously look at putting as a high priority item, Mr. Speaker, early childhood education, because I really do believe that until we invest in the first eight years of our life seriously, understanding cultural diversity and understanding the blessings of all of that, we will continue to address overcrowded prisons, lowered graduation rates, high rates of public assistance, high rates of family abuse, child abuse. We need to very seriously invest in the first eight years of human capital to really address that. And I think that the University of Guam is a place to help us understand what that looks like, to provide the forum for research and to show how that can be done. So, I look into the future and hope that this is a beginning. I certainly hope as well that this will help strengthen the School of Education, Mr. Speaker, because the School of Education really, for me, is the foundation of everything else that's going on in this island. The teacher preparation, the school leadership preparation is key to what's happening right now and what's not happening. And so, I hope that the current dean will be able to get some support from this appropriation, so that he can move forward, as he has succeeded in recruiting some very good faculty members to help invest and to help make Guam prosperous and succeed as we move forward. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak here on 524-31. I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Yamashita. Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Se, doos Maasi, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of Bill Number 524-31-CR as substituted, and I want to thank the good speaker and good author of this legislation for giving me the opportunity to be a part of the cosponsorship. Mr. Speaker, I just want to share with you that as this, when this bill was introduced, and when we looked at wanting to make sure that, we make sure that the University of Guam remains affordable and a sustainable option for higher education to our students, and just wanting to see what we could do with needing the resources for probably other opportunities. I want to say that the collaboration with GIDEA, the collaboration with the committee, but more importantly, so with our colleagues, Senator Yamashita, Senator Sam Mabini, I was very humbled at the fact that when we truly want to make things work for our students and listening to their cries, but more importantly, knowing that there are ways to help our community at large, this was one way of doing that and making it a win-win. So, I am just really appreciative that the Speaker found it in her heart to work with everybody and to address all the concerns that we had, and make the possible amendments and the adjustments, so the substituted version could come in. And I just want to say I thank her for her efforts in working closely with the committee members and, and making the necessary changes, and I just want to say thank you, and I hope my colleagues support this bill. Senator Maasi.
Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Any senators wish to be heard on the bill? If not, Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you again, Mr. Speaker. I'd be remiss if I didn't, of course, thank the committee in OFB, and I'd like to request, if our colleagues could allow me to include Speaker Pangolinan and also Senator Guthertz as other cosponsors to this bill. Thank you very much.
On the motion to place Bill 520-
524.
24, in the third voting file. Hearing no objection. Senator Guthertz on 532?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. As you know, yesterday, we did discuss this bill, and then we held it back a little bit for amendments. I understand from my colleague that, I assume he's finished his amendments, and I'd like to move, Madam Speaker, that this bill-
And you would like to discuss it? Oh, you, oh, you did then? So, you were, okay. So, on the motion then to send 532 down to the third reading file, without any objections, so. Thank you, Senator.
I just wanted to-
Oh, so you were good. Senator Munia Barnes for 519.
Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 519-31-CLR as substituted by the author be put to the third reading file, and I'd like to talk briefly about it, if I may.
You may proceed, Senator.
Se, doos Maasi, talu, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this Bill 519-31-CLR as substituted by the author is an act authorizing the Guam Visitors Bureau to recruit the necessary personnel to support its mission and to authorize an appropriation for the purpose of such recruitment, and to appropriate the sum of $60,000 from the Tourist Attraction Fund to the University of Guam to fund programs of the Guampedia Foundation. In short, Madam Speaker, the intent of this bill is to authorize GBB to recruit the necessary personnel to support its overall mission and to provide funding to fund programs of the Guampedia Foundation. I do want to note for the record that when we had the public hearing on the bill, we received no objection, and that I want to emphasize that this legislation does not place any additional financial burden to the government of Guam, rather that the additional funds will be appropriated from the tourist attraction funds, and that we have confirmed with BBMR, Special Revenue Fund Tracking Report, that indicates that the tourist attraction fund does have an overage to sustain this request. And I want to share for the record that the investment in the Guam Visitors Bureau and our island's visitor industry today will pay dividends for a stronger and better-prepared and more robust economic future for Guam. And I am committed to advancing our efforts to promoting Guam as a safe and extraordinary destination, and to ensure that, once our visitors arrive, that they are satisfied with our product and opt to return for future trips, and encourage their friends and families to do the same. And that, you may think that that's a tall order, but in our efforts to working closely with our stakeholders in the government and the stakeholders in the private community, but also, more importantly, so those stakeholders from also outside this area who want to make sure that the visitors, that tourists come and visit our beautiful tropical paradise, that this is an effort of all working, coming together and working as one. I do want to take the time, Mr. Speaker, lucky thing I looked up there, to thank the general manager, Mrs. Camacho. And, you know, it was just in the blink of an eye, was a woman and turned man. I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
No, but I did say that right. But anyways, I want to thank the good general manager and her, and her hard-working staff for their dedication and commitment to a very strong and dynamic visitor industry, and as a major component to our island's economic success. I want to also say that I will continue to work alongside the general manager and, of course, my colleagues, to ensure that GBB's mission is to efficiently and effectively promote and develop Guam as a safe and satisfying destination for our visitors, and to derive maximum benefits for the people of Guam, and that this whole effort will be upheld. I also want to say, in the efforts of promoting additional funding to Guampedia, I want to say that since its online lunch, launch in 2008, Guampedia has significantly increased its content and audience, specifically in the area of women in Guam history, ancient terminals, Guam's governors, Guam's heritage sites, and Guam's artists, and many others, all to assist in preserving our island's unique history and heritage. And, Mr. Speaker, I know you are very well aware of this, as you being part of the co-oversight chair with the good speaker, you know, and in your efforts to working and perpetuating our history and our heritage, you know that the exit surveys from, of the Guam visitors note that many have indicated that increased history and cultural offerings should be a very, be an area of very important improvement, and people who come to visit Guam want to learn about who we are as an island people, they want to know about our history, they want to know about our culture, they want to know about our heritage, they want to know about our integration, they want to know about our leaders, our educators, and, believe it or not, when we had the public hearing, Mr. Speaker, it was noted that folks from all around the world, not just within this region, within this Pacific region or this, this side of our international arena, but folks from all around the world was utilizing this site that Guampedia hosts. And, and one that came to mind that was real significant to me was a soldier, or an airman, who came, a young lady who was being deployed, and she said that when she had to help her son do her homework, her child do her home, his homework, that in order to get the information, she was turned on to the site of the Guampedia, and if it weren't for Guampedia, she would have not known where to get the information. And even when she was deployed, in order to share with her folks that she met back there being deployed, she introduced her new friends about Guampedia and about how the individuals could learn about Guam, and how impressed they were, and how a lot of them didn't even know where we were. It was like a secret paradise. And I was really touched and humbled by that. And, Mr. Speaker, I think that in this effort, and in this vein, as we continue to promote our island destination, this is a needed legislation, and I really ask my colleagues to help me support this effort. I know that there may be some concerns about us going through some financial difficulties, but sometimes, as we look at the tourist market being our number-one economic driver, sometimes you have to put in the resources so that you can be able to promote who we are and what we have to offer and what we can do. But we need to put in the resources so that those who are out there can come and learn about us and come and visit us. So, I'm asking my colleagues to please support me in this endeavor and support me in Bill 51931 as substituted. And I'd be remiss if I didn't include both my co-chairmanships as cosponsors of this bill, which would be Speaker Wampat and you, Mr. Speaker.
On that motion, hearing no objection.
Thank you.
Yes, you need to vote. After all that.
Madam Speaker, you're recognized. On the, on the motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Yes, I do rise in support of the bill, not because I'm a cosponsor, but this really, truly, the Guampedia, you know, is one of the best things, of course, that we could actually have here for our students, because many of our children don't have access to the old, what we call encyclopedias, the hard copies of encyclopedias, and, and when they're at their schools or public lib, one, public library, or other places that can access Guampedia, that it is very, very helpful. On the management, just put in a plug. If any one of you have the old encyclopedias and you want to get rid of them, please speak with me, because those can definitely be used in the outer adults. Mr. Speaker, I had a conversation with, you know, the mayor, the mayor-elect of Timuning, and as you know, the Visitors Bureau has been really working with all of the villages for the villages to come up with a theme that will depict what the village, that particular village will do during its annual fiesta. And my understanding is that with Timuning, Tuman, and Harmon, there was this latte festival. And I, we all know too, is that many of us, when we go into office, we bring our own personal furniture sometimes, or personal equipment, to kind of supplement what maybe we don't have wherever we're at. And when we leave, naturally, because they are personal properties of ours, that we would take them, and that, and we can't hold anyone to just making that as a contribution to the government. So, in order for the Timuning mayor to continue, the new mayor to continue with the latte festival, and having spoken to her, to the general manager also of GBB, and with the chair and others, is that I would like to add a new section to the bill, and what this is, is that it, that $10,000 is hereby appropriated from the tourist attraction fund to the mayor of Timuning, Tuman, Harmon, for the use in conjunction with the village's 2013 latte festival. That will become then the seed money for her to be able to continue to do what she needs to do in January of next year, mid-January is their fiesta. And to be, and normally, these- And to be, and normally these metal-framed latte stones are used in a park, a very well-decorated park, probably one of the prettiest ones that I've seen on the island, where the children actually come and participate in a contest to decorate that park. And where the children also, from the schools of both Timuning, Tuman, and Harmon, that there are performances in the park as well for Christmas. So, you know, this will be monies that will be able to help the mayor as, to be able to continue with that festival, it being in Timuning, where all the tourists are. So we want to be able to attract them and have them come every year. So I see you nodding your head in agreement, so I thank you for your support and our colleagues' support as well for this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the motion.
On the amendment?
On the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd just like to make an amendment. Just one of my concerns with the, on Section 2, is the use of the term "creation" of positions rather than establishment of positions on the GBB, GBB's staffing pattern. As we know, that under Chapter 6 for GCA, the creation, the meaning of creation brings into existence new positions that do not currently exist in the Government of Guam position listing. GBB, on the other hand, just wants to, the ability to add four new positions. So on my amendment, it's on Section 2 on Page 3, is to delete the word "creation" and add "establishment of positions." Everyone should have a copy of the amendment. And then, at the bottom, it will hereby establish, within its staffing patterns, the positions that they are seeking to add.
Any object, anyone wish to speak on the amendment? Any objection? Hearing none. Any other, oh, Senator Frank Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Chair, actually, my, I guess, my concern, and maybe the author can yield to this, was brought up by the amendment that just recently been proffered and passed, is within the hiring of, or the establishment and the hiring of these positions, I guess the question is, is this, is this permanent or are we, or is this something that's just going to be just for this project and then after this is done, they're no longer there? Because if that be the case, if it were permanent, is this a continuing appropriation every year to stop, you know, to keep these people onboard? Or are they just, they're just for that specific purpose and once it's done, they're done?
Do you yield?
My answer to that, Mr. Speaker, would be that these will be positions that will be permanent.
You know, that said, Mr. Speaker, just need to, I believe in the concept. I've always taken the position, with regards to monies within the TAF, that before we spend elsewhere, we make sure that our house is in order. And we make sure that the product that we're trying to sell elsewhere is the product that we truly have. And I also firmly believe, and I like the idea of being able to bolster the Guampedia, I'm a huge fan of that. And it's a great way to be able to find, you know, information on every aspect, on everything about Guam. And I agree with it, I believe in that. It's just now, what we're, is in the establishment of these positions, this is now a creation of more, and what is this going to do with next year's budget and years after that? And so I bring that question, because initially, I understand, is, if we want to bolster, we want to build it up, once it's built, okay, yes, there's always that whole discussion about maintaining. And... So I guess the question will be then, we're going to appropriate $170,000 from the TAF, that means from now on, there's going to be $170,000 less in the TAF and more towards, I mean...
Based on the request and the need for the positions that, to fulfill, to fulfill these positions, that was the request from the Visitors Bureau. But it's important to know that as we opened the new markets with the parole authority of Russia and the new technology that's come in with social media and being able to have full, if not full-time contact with the, with the technology that is being utilized today for attracting visitors, these positions were critical to what's happening today. And I think, based on the need also for compiling of data, this august body was already aware of the need of this, of the, the need for an additional position for the research department who's, who's probably only staffed with one employee and the administrator. So these positions were talked at length with the management and with the board, and this is what was worked on and agreed upon. So, yes, the positions will become permanent for the establishment of the staffing pattern, for the computer operator to the management analyst, marketing officer to, and the computer specialist.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity for that response. I guess, another question, and maybe the author can yield to this. What's the difference between a computer operator to and a computer specialist?
Do you yield?
I'm not a computer savvy. I always say, Mr. Speaker, that I'm just computer a little bit, but I want to say that there are different sets of expertise when it comes to an operator and a specialist. A specialist would probably be equivalent to one that we have here in our MIS department. And an operator would be one to probably just do a lot of the inputting and a lot of connecting through back and forth. So based on what I understand of these kind of positions, the specialist is more in tune with both the software and the hardware.
Is that response satisfactory?
Well, you know, and I guess it just goes to my whole point here with regards to, I see, you know, and I agree with, and I applaud the efforts to be able to bolster, you know, Guampedia. And I applaud and I appreciate, you know, GBB seeing actually the value in this. This for, this for GBB? I'm sorry. I retract on that. I'm looking at the wrong bill. Oh, it's incorporate. Okay. That's, that's where I was, I was like, bolster this and then... I, you know, I see the, okay, I see, I see where they want to bolster. Is this the best way to be able to do this? I don't know. Is there a way, you know, a good senator from, I guess, Miguel, okay? She had a great idea in being able to, to look at, you know, consolidating and incorporating many of the positions within the Government of Guam so that we can help to share in as far as not just the resources, but also the expertise in doing things. And so I guess I'm having a difficult time grasping right now in as far as, I know what we want, but, you know, can we afford, can we, can you continue to afford what we need? And I guess it's still within me struggling with regards to whether or not this is going to be the best utilization of our money right now and the resources that we have within the government or the resources that we're trying to create within the government. So... And I apologize for the confusion with regards to, and I support, I guess, you know, one of the great things is I support Guampedia. And so I'm going to look very closely to at this, whether or not these positions are, okay, truly necessary. So I want to thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for allowing me to speak on Bill Number 519-31. Mr. Speaker, I would like to speak about the support for Guampedia Foundation. I was actually at the table when Guampedia was being conceived and then born, and I truly appreciate the leadership of Ms. Shannon Murphy and Dr. Nicholas Goetzfrit, who really, and I think everyone needs to know and remember, that this whole project really began in partnerships. It really began with grant money. We have succeeded in growing Guampedia through writing for and getting grants through the National Endowment for Humanities, Guam Preservation Trust, Bank of Guam. Bank of Guam used to allow the Guampedia to work out of a room or a couple rooms, that was through the honorable Mr. Tony Leongue at the time, USDA Department of Interior, Gannett Foundation, Guam Council on Arts and Humanities, and then in partnership with University of Guam Mark, the Richard F. Titonal Micronesian Area Research Center. And then further than that, Guampedia partners with the Tomoral Fairs, the Guam Museum, Guam Public Library, Guam Parks and Rec, and the Archdiocese. And as they've gotten grant monies and as they proceeded, they have, as previous speakers have said, helped our visitors, helped people from across the globe, and helped our students across our school system understand our history, understand where we came from, where we are, and perhaps where we want to get. It is not always easy.
Can we have some more down the floor, please, so we can hear the speaker? Thank you. I'm sorry. Please proceed.
Excuse me, thank you. It is not easy, it is not always easy to find resources that talks about us, that talks about our history, that talks about our people, about our evolving... And so, I guess I'm having a difficult time grasping right now in as far as, I know what we want, but, you know, can we afford, can we continue to afford what we need? And I guess it's still within me struggling with regards to whether or not this is going to be the best utilization of our money right now and the resources that we have within the government or the resources that we're trying to create within the government. So, and I apologize for the confusion with regards to, and I support, I guess, you know, one of the great things is I support Guam Pedia. And so, I'm going to look very closely to whether or not these positions are, okay, truly necessary. So, I want to thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for allowing me to speak on Bill Number 519-31. Mr. Speaker, I would like to speak about the support for Guam Pedia Foundation. I was actually at the table when Guam Pedia was being conceived and then born, and I truly appreciate the leadership of Ms. Shannon Murphy and Dr. Nicholas Goatsfrit, who really, and I think everyone needs to know and remember, that this whole project really began in partnerships. It really began with grant money. We have succeeded in growing Guam Pedia through writing for and getting grants through the National Endowment for Humanities, Guam Preservation Trust, Bank of Guam. Bank of Guam used to allow the Guam Pedia to work out of a room or a couple rooms. That was through the Honorable Mr. Tony Leon Guo at the time, USDA Department of Interior, Gannett Foundation, Guam Council on Arts and Humanities. And then in partnership with University of Guam Mark, the Richard F. Titanel Micronesian Area Research Center. And then further than that, Guam Pedia partners with the Tomorrow Affairs, the Guam Museum, Guam Public Library, Guam Parks and Rec, and the Archdiocese. And as they've gotten grant monies and as they proceeded, they have, as previous speakers have said, helped our visitors, helped people from across the globe, and helped our students across our school system understand our history, understand where we came from, where we are, and perhaps where we want to get. It is not always easy.
Can we have some more around the floor, please, so we can hear the speaker? Thank you. I'm sorry. Please proceed.
Excuse me, thank you. It is not easy, it is not always easy to find resources that talks about us, that talks about our history, that talks about our people, about our evolving communities, about the changing landscape. And Guam Pedia and online encyclopedia has filled that void and does very well. And so as they continue to show us how true public partnerships work and succeed, they have come to a point where they have found that they need to continue to pay some of their writers. And it must be stated that a lot of the articles are actually written by many of us across the islands or across the region whom may have connection to what had happened or may have primary or original resources for the information. So this is an incredible feat where it's written of the people, by the people, and for the people. But now they're at a point where they need some money to continue. And so they are now reaching out for actual financial assistance from the government of Guam. And yes, now is a hard time. And yes, we're, at 2:00, we're going to go and committee the hole and talk about where we're going to find millions of dollars to scrape away so that we don't have to plunge down all these looming fiscal cliffs. I suggest that the $60,000 that has been identified by the author of this measure is a very good investment and that the investment of 60,000 really will yield much, much more. It will continue to provide the kind of history and information that our visitors are seeking. As one of the previous speakers said, it will continue to help provide a connection for when our families are serving in harm's way. And they want to know a little bit more, and they want to share with their new friends and their new families what Guam is really all about. It is a way to grow us. It is a way to strengthen what we are and what we are about, what we have become and what we don't want to be. The data, the richness, the writings, the research is really, really important for us to continue to determine who we are and where we want to get. Many times, people are criticized for making decisions that are not data-based. And I ask that we consider that Guam Pedia is a data-rich resource that helps us make very good decisions. We have spent a lot of time talking about tax refunds, and rightfully so, that money belongs to the people. But I ask that we also start talking about other investments that will really help our community prosper, grow, and become better at what we are and strengthen our identity. So, while I know the conversation is very serious, and it should be, $60,000 is a lot of money, the other appropriation in here is a lot, everything is a lot of money right now, a penny is a lot of money. But I ask that we consider that this bill represents a really good investment into categories that really do help shape and mold Guam, what we are today and what we do want to become. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Senator Yamashita. Any other senators wish to be heard on the bill? I see no hands. On the motion, Madam Chair, on the motion to send the bill to the voting file, any objections? Seeing none, hearing none. Bill 519, uh, 502?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, yesterday afternoon, we started discussion on Bill 502, and the amendment that was adopted was to add Senator Barnes as an additional co-sponsor. And then we took a little bit of a recess to allow for time for an amendment to be made. And so this time, I first make my motion to place Bill 502 in the third reading file with some discussion.
On that motion, hearing objection. You recognize Senator Espisha?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, again, I want to express my appreciation to our Oversight Chair, Senator Barnes, who has oversight, direct oversight responsibility over the Guam Visitors Bureau and the Tourist Attraction Fund, which we know is generated from the hotel occupancy tax. And so when we presented this bill to her with Senators Tom Addus, Senator Palacios, and Senator Guthers, she was very receptive and recognizes the message this bill would send in that the visitor industry must always, always do things for the island community beyond Tuman. And the message also is that we must do whatever we can to make sure that we protect the goose that lays that golden egg. And this $500,000 would go to fund the Tuman precinct operations. And how it would help the other villages throughout the island is that the $500,000 that we've appropriated to GVB to fund the Tuman precinct operations from the general fund, then the director or the chief of police can then use that money elsewhere. And I know the argument was made that maybe the governor might withdraw, withhold some of the monies released to the Guam Police Department by $500,000. So essentially, all we're doing is supplanting GPD's operations, and they're not going to see any additional money. Now, for the record, Mr. Speaker, I hope that's not the case, and I hope that the administration will not do that. And I know that GPD will be monitoring this very closely, as well as this legislature will be monitoring this very closely. And the only thing GVB is asking, and they are supportive of the bill, is that we, from the $500,000, we appropriate 150,000. Is this, can I have another, because the way I'm reading this...
Short break.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and also thank our Oversight Chair for GVB. This amendment that I'm moving on her behalf as well would appropriate an additional $150,000 from the unappropriated balance of FY 2012 revenues to the Guam Visitors Bureau for the replacement of the outdated and inoperable security system along Polisambatoris Road and for the installation of a new security camera system along Governor Carlos Camacho Road. And so if this amendment should pass, the title will be changed through the legal council to provide additional $650,000 from the TAF for the purposes of protecting our visitors as well as our island community. And so I have this amendment that was copied and passed out.
On the amendment, I see the hand of Senator Palacios. Oh, on the bill, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Speaker, with regards to this amendment, and just before, and I'm going to have the same concern with regards to the bill in itself. And with regards, and I recognize that the appropriation is coming from the unappropriated and the increase in the 2002 revenues. The issue that I...
I think that probably should be corrected, unappropriated balance of the TAF.
Okay. Yeah, please. So then I'm going to go and make that amendment, just to...
Please.
Okay? So it's the TAF revenues?
Yes.
Okay.
On the amendment, any objection to including TAF?
Okay, that's, now that that's taken care of, I guess the issue and the concern that I got here is of 150,000, and it says for the replacement of the outdated and inoperable security system along Polisambatoris Road and for the installation of a new security camera system. Has anybody done, or is there, is there a breakdown as to how much is needed to replace the outdated system and to... I mean...
Do you yield?
They do. They do have, they do have a plan. That's how I got the amount from them. But I didn't...
And the reason why I say this, and I guess I'm being very, I don't want to sound like I'm nitpicking here, but I would appreciate if I would know just the exact amount, because $150,000 just sounded like a rounded figure. And I'm just trying to throw all kinds of scenarios in my head as to how much it's going to cost to replace the outdated and how much it's going to cost to put in a new one. And it's going to be very, you know, I'll sit down if it comes out to exactly $150,000.
We'll take a short break and see if we can get you an answer.
Okay, that's, now that that's taken care of, I guess the issue and the concern that I got here is of the $150,000 and it says for the replacement of the outdated and inoperable security system along Polisam Vatoris Road and for the installation of a new security camera system. Has anybody done, or is there, is there a breakdown as to how much is needed to replace the outdated system and to?
Do you yield?
They do have, they do have a plan. That's how I got the amount from them. But I didn't-
And the reason why I say this, and I guess I'm being very, I don't want to sound like I'm nitpicking here, but I would appreciate if I would know just the exact amount, because $150,000 just sounded like a rounded figure. And I'm just trying to throw all kinds of scenarios in my head as to how much it's going to cost to replace the outdated and how much it's going to cost to put in a new one. And it's going to be very, you know, I'll sit down if it comes out to exactly $150,000.
We'll take a short break and see if we can get you an answer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, of course, I rise in support of Bill 502. I remember around July or August, I mean, rather, June or July of this year, when the author of the bill and myself, we attended a graduation. It was actually coming out of GCC, it was held down at some hotels, I forget about that. Graduating some basic law enforcement officers who have received certificate. And this are, not, this are civilians who voluntarily attended the class and the training, spent, paid with their own money, with their own funds, with the hope that as soon as there are available positions with the Guam Police Department, that they will be able, they'll be having, at least on a limited term, appointment. And so families were there, they were so happy, they were hopeful that, you know, this is the new chapter in their life. And so the bill came about as a result of that, and looking at the stamp when this was filed in August, then I would think that the month before that is when the event occurred. And so my point here, Mr. Speaker, is that, yes, the Guam Police Department has available trained people right now who are not yet in the systems, but who are ready to join with this additional funding that has been identified in the amount of $500,000. And so I rise in support, and I like to share that my colleagues, that the graduation took place somewhere, sometimes, I think, in June or July, and then this bill was introduced. Immediately, the author found some funding, and I hope that my colleagues would support this. Definitely, the Guam Police Department can use additional 20 more new patrol officers that can, in this case, probably reinforce the Tumon area and somewhere in Tumon, yeah. 20 additional position would go a long way in enhancing, of course, the safety of the people of Guam to the Guam Police Department, and I rise in support of this. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Not seeing any, Senator Espisho, on the motion to send the bill down to the voting file. Any objection? Seeing and hearing no objection. Bill 519. What's down? 528. 528, can somebody get the speaker, please? Resolution presentation at 11:45. We'll break now, and everybody will be back to start up at 2:00.